Thanks, everyone, for coming. We'll call the meeting to order. Tony, do we have a quorum, please?
Councilmember Contreras, councilmember Rennebaum are absent. All else present.
Okay, thank you. This time, would you please rise? Father Wilkes is going to come and lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as your people throughout the world are looking forward to the celebration of the resurrection of Jesus, we walk in these days of Lent acknowledging our brokenness, acknowledging the brokenness of the world. And, Lord, we ask that you would bring to our sin-crowded minds wisdom and knowledge and skill and moving your people. And I pray for this council gathered here tonight, that you would give them wisdom, that you would fill us with your Spirit and give us the ability to do this work that you've called us to do. Thank you for being with us, Lord. Thank you for being with us every day. Thank you for your love for us. Thank you for your Son. We pray all this in Christ's name.
Amen. Would you mind leading us in the pledge, Father?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have this public hearing?
Yeah, Tony, we got a public hearing?
We do.
Can we open it up?
Mm-hmm.
We'll open up a public hearing for the planned development of District for Standard Service. We'll do that at 6:02 PM. Anyone have any comments, anything to say? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 6:03 PM. Item number, on the consent agenda, approval of city council meeting minutes for February 28th, 2023. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from February 28th, city council meeting 20, I'm sorry, February 28th, 2023, city council meeting.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll second. No question.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Serena. We're going to move item number five up, the annual audit report by Snow Garrett Williams.
I'm Reba Long. I'm a senior manager with Snow Garrett Williams, and I'm going to go through the audit report for the year ended September 30th, 2022. You all have a copy of it at your table there. Please stop and ask me questions as I go through this, so I'm not just talking about numbers for the next 10 minutes, and I'll try to get through it quickly. And I'm going to start off on page three, so that's our independent auditor's report. And it says right at the top, we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the City of Willow Park as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022. And in our opinion, those financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the changes in the financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So that's a lot of words to say this is the clean or unmodified opinion that you're looking for on the financial statements. The management's discussion and analysis starts on page six. So this is a really good overview of the financial statements that's in more of a narrative format and has comparisons to the prior year results. So I would encourage you to read through that, just to get a little bit of a summary of the financials. We will skip forward to page 18, though, which is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So as of September 30th, 2022, the governmental funds ended with total assets of just under $13 million and total liabilities of about $600,000 for a total fund balance of 12, yeah, I'm on the right line, $12.2 million. Of that fund balance, 6 million of it is unassigned, so that's available for the day-to-day operations of the city, and that's all in the general fund. And then another 6 million of it is restricted. And most of that is restricted for capital projects and for debt service. And there is a detail of the exact restrictions on page 33 of the report if you were interested. This fund balance is up about $10 million from the prior year. And if we'll turn to page 19, we'll kind of walk through those changes in the fund balance. So total revenues at the end of the year were about $7.8 million, which was up a little over $1 million from fiscal year '21. And total expenditures ended at about $7.4 million, and those were only up $800,000 compared to the prior year. So your increase in revenues outpaced your increase in expenses, which is what we like to see. Most of your increase in revenues was property and sales taxes, which we expect with increasing property values that we see around here, and also the additional hotel occupancy tax with the new hotel in town, and then the drainage fees that got added at the very end of fiscal year '21. That gives us a total excess of revenues over expenditures of $337,000. So that's really your operating income of the governmental funds. And then, under the other financing sources and uses section, we can see that there's bond proceeds of about $9 million and then premium on the issuance of long-term debt of $1 million. So that's the two new certificates of obligation that were issued this year. So that's how we get to the total change in fund balance of $10 million. So about $300,000 from operations and then about $10 million from the bond issuances. Any questions? Okay, we will skip to page 21. So this is the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. That's the water, wastewater and solid waste funds. They ended the 2022 fiscal year with total assets of about $55.6 million. So that was down about $2 million from the prior year. That was just spending bond proceeds from bonds that had been issued in the past and were just sitting in cash waiting to be spent. So you can see the decrease in cash kind of offsets with the increase in the fixed asset balance. So fixed assets in the proprietary funds increased about $3.5 million, and most of that's CIP on the Fort Worth Waterline project. Total liabilities ended the year at about $42 million. This is down about $3 million from the year before, and most of that is just debt payments and a decrease in that due to other governments, which is Hudson Oaks' portion of the outstanding bond. So our total net position at the end of the year for the proprietary funds is just over 13 million of that. 9.5 million is unrestricted, so then that's available for the continued operations, any replacements that need to be made in those funds. On page 22, we'll walk through the changes in that net position for the year. So total operating revenues were about $4.4 million. That was up about $500,000 from the year before. Most of that's in the impact fees line item, which makes sense with the amount of development that's happened in the city this year. And then also, charges for services were up pretty significantly. Operating expenses were only up by $245,000 for a total of just over $3 million for the year. So again, we see that increase in revenues outpacing the increase in expenses for a total operating income of about $1.2 million for those funds for the year. A little further down, we see capital contributions of $489,000. That's the federal grant funding, the ARPA funding that was used to purchase capital asset additions. So that just gets listed as a capital contribution in the report. So our total change in net position at the end of the year for the proprietary funds was just over $1 million. And that gives us an ending net position of $13.4 million for those funds. Any questions? Okay, I'm not going to go through all the notes. There's lots of them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have, either now or in the future. I'm just going to touch on the single audit now. Actually, we're going to skip to page 68, and I'm going to touch on the internal control letter. So just very briefly, this whole letter states that we didn't have any internal control or compliance findings noted in our audit procedures. So that is, definitely, your staff is to be commended for that. We don't see that a whole lot with cities. So skipping onto page 74, that's the single audit letter. This letter states that we don't have any compliance findings, or we don't have any, and we don't have any internal control findings for the single audit. So we looked at, our major program this year was the same as in fiscal year '21, which I presented to you guys a few months ago, and it was the expenditures from the TWDB bond for the Fort Worth Waterline project. So we looked at those funds again, because there's so much that's been spent from them. Everything that was spent was in compliance with the requirements of that grant funding, and we didn't have any internal control issues noted. So that's all I've got.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to accept the audit report?
Make a motion to accept the audit report as presented by Snow Garrett Williams.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, request for rezoning from C Commercial and I-20 Overlay District to PDSS Plan Development District for the development of restaurants and other uses as stated and permitted on the 5.96 acres of Lot 1, Block 3, Porter Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for planned development district zoning as per the Project 380 agreement for the requirement for the standard service restaurant and other uses for that area. City staff has reviewed the proposal, and all requested changes have been addressed and made on what you're seeing. The PNZ conducted a public hearing to consider comments regarding the zoning, but there were none. And Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning with a 3-0 vote. And Stark Engineering is here with any questions.
Okay. Any questions, or do we have a motion? For the rezoning?
I'll make a motion for approval of rezoning from C Commercial and I-20 Overlay District to PDSS Plan Development District as presented for Lot 1, Block 3, Porter Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Our next item is a presentation by Michael Demus Encore regarding response update to windstorm on March 2nd, 2023. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Demus. I'm with Encore Electric Delivery. I'm a customer service executive. One of my cities that I represent is Willow Park, along with about 14 others, but that's for a different time. We had a significant winter event, March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, that impacted a majority of the Encore service territory. At the height of the storm, we had about 290,000 customers without power. We were, with the help of our mutual assistance partners that came in from Oklahoma, Louisiana, Florida, North and South Carolina, and Virginia, we were able to restore those customers in a little over 48 hours. Unfortunately, here in Willow Park, we had about 743 customers that were impacted due to that wind event. I think one of significant, that I think I was asked to speak on, was the Kings Gate, Yucca, Sherwood area, where we had, what we guessed, 70 to 80 mile an hour straight-line winds that broke three poles. And unfortunately, those poles had limited truck or no truck access, so everything had to be done by hand. We had to hand dig the poles. We had to hand carry the poles from the street to the backyards. We had to hand bring in a transformer that fed several residents in that area. And that had to be done by hand up to the pole and mounted. We had significant tree trimming that needed to be done before we could even start any of this restoration. Had to restring wire, get it all tied in, and that was over a little over 24 hours. Those particular customers, about 86 customers, that were affected by that outage. So it's unfortunate, it's frustrating, I know, to the residents. After about 12 hours, you've lost everything in your refrigerator and your freezer. But Mother Nature's rough. Sometimes it hits here, sometimes it's the other part of our service territory, and we try to restore it just as safely and as quickly as we can. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to-
We appreciate the communication with the city and our city manager. And I got three calls in Brazil about wanting to know when their power was coming back on.
Okay. You're like me. I get 24/7. Phone gets blown up all the time. I understand.
But I appreciate the job you did, and I know you guys did all you could do to get it on as quick as you could.
Is there, I'm sorry, does any Councilmember?
I was just going to say, your frontline guys, I saw some working out there. They did a great job, I think. I know that timeframe wasn't what we wanted, but that wasn't an easy task.
Thank you very much. I will pass that on.
Please do.
Because I have a question. Yeah. Is there anything, from a city standpoint, Public Works, whatever, that we can do to help? I know you can never tell how bad of an event's going to be, but what can we do to help mitigate this?
Yeah, if you could just divert those storms somewhere else.
If it has rained, I kind of want it.
Even more, around the 15 cities that I'm responsible for. No, honestly, if you just go to our website, there's a My Encore Alerts that you can sign up for, and that is updated as these events happen. It keeps the individual customer updated on estimated times of restoration. That's honestly all that can be done. I mean, when we realize we have a storm of this significance, our mutual assistance partners, they get here in a heartbeat. And we do the same for them. We travel to Florida. We traveled to New Orleans. We traveled to New York. We've even gone to Puerto Rico to help those folks out. So it's a great program. All we do is make a call, and boom, they're headed this way. So unfortunately, there's not a lot to resist, just other than have the understanding and understand that we're, we know the power's out, we know it's frustrating, and we're trying to get back on as quickly as we can.
If you hadn't had to do all this by hand, would that have cut the time in half?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. If this was a brand-new build, and trees were trimmed, and we're setting poles and running lines, six, eight hours.
Wow.
Are there any other areas in town that could have a similar situation with a similar storm?
Any poles that are between homes, where there's not any truck access, they're all built alike. Fort Worth has alleys. I don't believe there's any alleys in this part of Parker County. I think everything is just back-to-back. We try to get new subdivisions with all the facilities underground and in front to minimize that. But unfortunately, the older neighborhoods, that's just the way they're built.
So if we can identify some of those places where the poles were basically on the property lines, for lack of a better term, you know, if we see something that, hey, this pole's leaning or this down, can we, can our staff contact you guys?
Absolutely. Yes. Shoot me an email. One of the criteria's on leaning poles is when we get a report of leaning pole, we'll have an operating tech go out there. They will actually kind of shovel around the bottom to make sure it's not rotted off at the butt. If it is, if it is a sound pole, it's not rotted off, if it's, if as long as it's not leaning to where wires are sagging, to where they're not safe, that pole will be changed out.
I'll visit with staff to help us maybe put a program in place.
If you have folks that are out in the field a lot, make them jot down a note, shoot it to you, shoot me an email. We'll take a look at them.
Thank you, Michael.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, consideration and action to appointment of interim chief of police. Mr. Grimes?
Yes. Hold on for a second. Let me get my notes back up here. As we know, unfortunately, Chief Ellis, we tried to bribe her to stay. And I even offered to babysit Zeke from time to time, but that didn't work either. Yeah. Zeke is the dog, by the way, in case anybody's wondering.
About to ask that. Did I miss something there?
We will have the need for appointing an interim chief of police. I have the utmost confidence in Assistant Chief Daniel Franklin to fill that role. And he is absolutely ready to step in. You've got some big shoes to fill, should that happen, but I'm confident that you can fill the role. And staff recommendation is to appoint Daniel Franklin as interim chief of police.
Do we have a motion?
What's the effective date?
The effective date would be March 24th. I think there's going to be some overlap. Are you going to be here, though, for that week?
That's what I thought.
No, we're in here. We're still here.
Okay. Okay. Pat, do you have any comment on?
No, that's fine. A little overlap would be good, really, for the transition.
The 24th?
24th.
We call it 24th.
All right. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we appoint our deputy chief as interim, effective March 24th, prior to Chief Ellis's exit.
Daniel Franklin, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Item number seven, authorize city manager to give written notice of intent to terminate Maverick Computer Services managed services agreement. Mr. Grimes?
So we've had a relationship with Maverick Computer Services going back to 2010. And over the past couple of months, we've had a lot more demand than we, than maybe Maverick can handle. So much so that we're going to probably need somebody here more on a daily basis, rather than just as an as-needed basis. And to do that, we're recommending that we cancel or provide notice with Maverick to terminate the agreement. Staff has got a couple of ideas in mind that we will be presenting to you guys at a future date. I want to thank Mark and his team. But we are just, we're growing so much so that we have a lot of needs, and I think Maverick could probably camp out here all day and probably not catch all of our needs. Staff has met on this two or three times. The consent is unanimous among senior staff that we need to transition into an organization or an individual that may be able to give us more personalized service.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
What would be the termination date of that?
It is a, so the, is it 60 or 90?
60 days.
60 days. Yeah, there's two numbers. And there, one said 90 days, but the parentheses said 60, and I think we've agreed to a 60-day termination.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
I want to be clear about something. I don't want to disparage Maverick. Y'all are great. I think we're just growing much larger than, than, and we just need more individualized attention.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
Would you say this is more a result of the move to the new city hall, or is this city growing, all of the above? What?
All of the above.
What aspects?
So obviously, we have a lot more technology in this building than we did the other one, so I don't want to discount that. Wait times are probably a little bit longer than when we first started, certainly when I first started. The staff that they have is very knowledgeable, but I'm noticing that certain deadlines are just, I mean, they're just not being met. And that's because we are, you know, we're putting a lot of work, a lot of pressure on them to get some stuff done.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to allow the city manager, authorize the city manager to give a notice to terminate a contract with Maverick Computer Services.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. This time, we'll go into executive session to discuss interlocal agreement with Parker County ESD Number 1, an agreement to sell Public Safety Building Fire Station Number 2 to Parker County ESD Number 1. And unlike other times, the council will dismiss, be dismissed, and you guys can sit there till we get by. Are we good yet? Okay, thank you. Executive session, we're coming out at 6:56 PM. Thanks, everyone, for your cooperation. And item number 10, the council may consider, discuss, and approve an interlocal agreement with Parker County ESD Number 1, transitioning fire department employees and certain equipment to ESD 1. Do we have a motion, please?
Item number two, guys.
That's okay.
While they're looking around, I want to make a couple of comments on the ILA. This will be effective March 24th. There was some questioning about the number of firemen. We currently have 11 FTEs, firemen over at the fire station. Nine will be transitioning over to ESD. Two will be staying with the city. Two, we have a fire marshal that's been in place right now, which has been Chief Snyder. The ESD does not provide fire marshal services to the city, so Chief Snyder and Kevin Lockwood will be staying with the city. We've been pretty consistent with that since the beginning, that we would need to have a fire marshal in place. And Chief Snyder's agreed to do that. That was months and months and months ago. There are three part-timers on the books. Two have not expressed any interest at all. In fact, they haven't even been active with the agency in months, if not years, according to Chief Snyder. The third part-timer, more or less volunteers his time and is comfortable with whatever schedule the ESD wants to put out there. The transition of salary will be for the nine FTEs that are going over, and that'll be for basically Q3 and Q4 salary, personnel, and other associated costs.
Okay. Leah, do you have the?
I do.
Verbiage?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Parker County ESD 1, transferring fire department employees and equipment to ESD Number 1, effective March 24th, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, making, the city council may consider, discuss, and approve agreement to sell the Public Safety Building and Fire Station Number 2 to Parker County ESD Number 1. Do we have the verbiage on that, or we just need a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement to sell the Public Safety Yes. I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement to sell the Public Safety Building and Fire Station Number Two to Parker County ESD Number One, subject to agreement on the bond covenant.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have a motion to second, please?
I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. We had a councilman, Greg Ronnenbaum, was rushed to the hospital, was it last night?
Last night, yes, sir.
Last night. We got a report this afternoon. He's fine. He'll be discharged tonight or in the morning. So I went to see him this morning, and it was kind of a scare, but everything's okay. So Mary and Greg thanked everyone for their thoughts and prayers. Thanks, everyone, for your time moving the city forward. I thank the chief, fire chief, for making this transition very smooth with ESD One. We appreciate your help, chief, and all your guys. That's all I have. Mr. Grimes?
First of all, I want to thank the, Michelle, I want to thank your guys, Public Works staff. They have done a great job in helping us prepare some of the things and get, move and furniture around and whatnot, and they show up at a moment's notice. And so, Michelle, I just want to publicly thank your staff for what they do. Finally, and thankfully, but regretfully, we will have a reception for Chief Ellis on March 24th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. 23rd? You're right.
Thanks, chief.
March, I had, see, we've got 23rd and 24th, and we're doing all these other things. On the 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, please come, and we'll give her well wishes and slash her tires and put sugar in her gas tank and stuff like that.
Is that Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I show up to the right party.
It's on, it's on one of the days.
All right. Anyone else? Any council have anything? Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.